We'll get started tonight with a little bit of an abbreviated meeting. Angie is our election official is sick tonight, so we're gonna have to hold a few items, but we'll get some business done tonight that needs to be done. This is a special called meeting. It's Monday, May fifteenth, 2023 at six forty. Calling the meeting to order, it's like we're all present except Mr. Dootschman, so we have certainly more than a quorum to take business tonight. Are there any public comments? Kevin? Item six, we'll put you on hold for a minute. Alright, so I'm gonna try to follow these instructions that Angie left. I have bungled this numerous times in the past, but we'll do our best without her. So item number one is discussion possible acts regarding certification of summary of election results and conduct official canvass of the general election held on May sixth, 2023 for the city of McGregor. So with that item... Let's see what we've got here in our packet. Alright, so I will read off the summary of general election held, uh, May sixth, 2023. This is the canvassing of the votes. Position for council member Ward one, Andrew J. Henderson, senior, totaled nineteen votes. Alfredo Macedo totaled thirteen votes. Position for council member Ward five at large, Sherry Lynn Adams totaled one hundred and seventy-seven votes. Dennis Paul Fowler at ninety-two votes. And position for council member three currently held by Stephen Dootschman was uncontested. Let's see. I gotta take this call, it'll take about a second, but I had something really not good to play some off. Sorry about that. So I'll read off the certification from the McLennan County Elections Administrator. Says I, Jared Goldsmith, McLennan County Election Administrator, hereby confirm that the May sixth, 2023 joint general election is completed and I certify that all the ballots for this election have been counted by the Hart Inner Civic Tabulating Equipment, the tabulator, tab, tallies and tabulations are a true and correct accounting of the counting of the results. Those results are just as I read them a moment ago. We will place these in the official minutes of tonight's meeting. And with that, is there a motion to approve the certification and the summary of the general election results that were held May sixth, 2023 for the city of McGregor?
I make a motion to approve the certification of summary of election results for May sixth, 2023.
There's a motion, a second under item number one regarding canvassing of the votes. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. So items two, three, and four relating to the administration of the oaths and signing the certificates and appointing the mayor pro tem, we will hold that until the next meeting so that Angie is our election, city election official can take care of that. So with that, we'll move to consent agenda. Item one A is to consider approving minutes of council meeting held on April tenth, 2023. Those minutes of the meetings, ring your packet. Anybody have any question or comments about the minutes from May fifteenth, 2023 and April tenth? Uh, excuse me, April tenth, 2023 is the only set of minutes we have.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for April tenth, 2023.
There's a motion, a second, to approve the April tenth, 2023 minutes. Any other questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. To item six, this is the discussion, possible acts regarding approval to close Sixth Street between Taylor and Monroe from six PM until eight PM on June eleventh, 2023 for the Rett Revolution Bike Night. So Robbie Joe? Center stage.
Get a microphone and everything, this is great. Okay, so this is Rett Revolution, we're a nonprofit organization that our, our mission statement is to make positive impacts in this community. So just a little background, we did Kids' Day last year, the first Saturday in October. Believe that that was a overwhelming success for a community event. And so this is similar, but smaller, smaller in nature. But we wanted to kind of do something with bicycles at, at that event, but it just didn't work in. So kind of thinking through that, this was the idea to try to get kids riding their bikes again and do it in a safe family atmosphere. And the city has closed that section of Sixth Street before for Halloween, and so we live on Sixth Street, so we understand how that made such a safe impact on Halloween with people being able to walk down the middle of the street and trick or treat safely. So that was kind of where this thought was, is we could close down these streets and just make a very safe place for kids to come, families to come, ride bikes, you know, scooters, non-motorized activities, a good summer fun night. And the Rett Revolution will just kind of be in charge of safety and we're gonna have refreshments. We involve the churches, there's three churches on that path. We already have one church that's in agreement with helping us with, you know, refreshments and just so, it's just made for a community night, so. I have these. This is what I would pass out to, y'all have them already?
Uh, we've got this, maybe a little different.
So this is what we're gonna pass out to the, all the people that live on Sixth Street, if y'all will put this, so that everyone's informed of what's going on.
Is Paul responsible for cooking all the hot dogs?
Yes. He and Kevin Houchen.
I know I am.
And I'm sure our driveway will be used for something, so. Yes, so, any, any other questions? I think the city manager had said this is contingent on Mayor Haring and Councilman Allison riding unicycles at some point.
Only if I can stand on Paul's shoulders while he drives it.
And I'm sure juggling should be involved as well.
We can pull it off, if you can, we can.
Alright, okay. Anything else?
Anybody have any questions?
I think Paul, last time you, you said you had talked to people on Sixth Street already, correct?
No, we have not.
Okay.
Just a couple, just a couple of people, not, has not really gone out.
Not globally, so that's why I said.
I don't really see them, I mean, we've done it before, so I'm just hoping that it'll, you know, I'm pretty sure it'll be okay.
Yeah, we were gonna kind of use this week and go to the houses in those five blocks and pass them out and talk to people who actually talk to them and tell them that this is what we're doing, this is what it's for, and it'll be two hours, and if you have to get out of your house, if you have to, you know, people can leave if they need to leave and go somewhere, they just have to be aware of what's going on and be careful.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
It's part of what makes a great city is having community engagements.
Yeah, that's right.
We're trying to do our part.
And thank you, Rett Revolution, probably all due for the community.
Thank you.
A most eloquent speech, Mrs. Allison.
Can I sit down?
You may be excused. Okay, so is there a motion under item six to approve the closure of Sixth Street between Taylor and Monroe from six to eight on June eleventh?
I'm sure if we approve the Rett Revolution, those are the streets between Taylor and Monroe, whenever, for Rett Revolution Night, Bike Night?
Yeah, that's it. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries.
Oh, the motion forgot to say Mayor and Paul Allison on the unicycle.
I noticed that was not part of the motion.
You get some big wheels out there, I promise I'm on.
It's John Moira.
If they make a big, pick up a big wheel.
There's no big wheel, it'll hold you, Paul. Alright, item seven, receive the street presentation provided by Walker Partners and Public Works Manager. This one, that one's on too.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. As you know, the city has worked with, Walker Partners has worked with the city probably over the last eight years or so on what we would just call a street program, a street rehabilitation program. We've, the last six years or so have done some water and wastewater projects that kind of came out of that, and then either contracted or city staff have been rehabilitating the streets behind that, and then also the last couple of years, just doing more overlay work as opposed to chip seal and projects of that nature. So tonight, we just kind of have an update meeting for, an update presentation for you. We're currently working with city staff to identify new streets, potential, either basically potential mitigation projects or rehabilitation, reconstruction projects for those streets, figuring out what's best, what the best strategy for that is, and also identifying additional water and wastewater projects to make sure we get that done prior to the street reconstruction or rehabilitation. And then also at the end, we'll talk a little bit about Johnson Drive, as that's been added as of late. So again, as I mentioned, really starting back in 2015 is when we started working with the city. At that time, we'd identified about ten miles of reclamation or chip seal. At that time, there was no reconstruction identified. In October of 2016, we gave an update meeting to council where there was a road bond that was passed, and we had, at that time, we had identified some additional streets that we had estimated about $750,000 worth of paving cost. And again, that included those water and wastewater projects that were up around the $5.7 million cost. We did those in three different phases, and once those projects were complete, it was actually only about $4.13 million that was spent. And again, from 2018 to 2020, city staff chip sealed those streets that the water and wastewater had been replaced. And then over the last couple of years, the city staff has been overlaying about, has overlaid about 10,000 linear feet of streets. Can you have the next slide for me? There goes. So what we're showing here is a pavement condition over time graph. On the left, you can see this is the pavement condition, bottom being poor, top being good, and then the bottom being the time. And this red line here is kind of your pavement condition as time goes by. So when a street is first constructed, its condition stays fairly, stays good up until a certain point, it starts to dip down and then gets into the poor condition as time goes by. So what we'll talk about are the three different types of strategies, preventative maintenance, rehabilitation, and reconstruction. And what you can do is if we do a project here in the preventative maintenance phase, which is representing this, what this green line is representing, you bring your condition back up, but as you can see, over time, again, it starts to degrade. You can do a second one, maybe some sort of rehabilitation, but then once it gets under this line, again, you're in the rehabilitation, reconstruction area. So some of your streets are here, some of them are here, and some of them are down here. And that's just what we're gonna be evaluating and applying cost to.
So I'm noticing on the time, though, there's nothing on the time as far as the bar on that graph. What are we talking about time-wise?
Usually preventative maintenance, anywhere from ten to fifteen years, you can, you can do your preventative maintenance, and depending on the type of preventative maintenance you do, you can add anywhere from two to five years worth of, worth of pavement life. But once you get past that, again, you can see how steep this, this decline gets. After the ten to fifteen year range, your pavement, and you start to see that pavement failure, is when you're more in the rehabilitation, reconstruction phase. So the different types of strategies, again, the three different, preventative maintenance, rehabilitation, reclamation, and reconstruction. Preventative maintenance, there's annual maintenance, which is your crack and joint maintenance. Again, that's basic, just crack sealing, stuff that the city, the city staff can do, really all the annual maintenance city staff can do. Drainage and ditch improvements to help make sure you get water off your streets. Tree removal, tree roots can be an issue for your pavement. Pothole patching, and then other preventative maintenance, more long-term, chip seal, fog seal, slurry seal, and overlay. Again, all strategies that city staff can perform if necessary. Rehabilitation and reclamation, there's really kind of just two different types. There's your full depth reclamation, which is the milling of your entire pavement, your pavement structure, your asphalt on top plus your base, mixing in a stabilizing agent of lime, lime flash or cement, and then a asphalt emulsion. And we'll talk about that a little bit later as well in regards to Johnson Drive, or your milling overlay, and just milling the pavement surface and overlaying with the new hot mix top. And then reconstruction is exactly what it sounds like, it's a full reconstruction. You come in, excavate out the existing section, if necessary, rebuild curb and gutters, driveways, sidewalks, et cetera. Any questions so far? So again, just a table to show, city forces are able to do preventative maintenance items, and typically, any rehabilitation or reclamation or reconstruction is put out forbid by a contractor.
Weren't we doing some of that reclamation ourselves for a while?
Yes. Yeah, that was, y'all were coming in, taking out, to a degree, it was almost even a reconstruction, from my understanding. It was excavating out, was it six inches, Kevin, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Bringing in six inches of flex base and then putting a two inch overlay on top.
So is that policy changing or not?
Well, if you're gonna get down the road farther, yes, it is. We do have expertise in how to continue some of it, but not all of it on this scale. We'll see a little bit more about that in a couple slides.
Okay.
So the next slides show you what has been identified between both city staff and Walker Partners. We've had a couple of meetings, we've done, we've driven the streets to look at their condition, and then just through discussions, identified which streets we'd like to see done within this street program. And so here, you have the list of streets, the limits, their lengths and widths, and then also working with the city identifying if water and/or wastewater needs to be replaced prior to that street rehabilitation or reconstruction. And so you can see there's, some of them have been identified for just water, some both, and some none at all, that the water and wastewater is either in good condition or it's already been replaced. So you can see it's pretty substantial, and the next slide is just a continuation of that. Again, more streets here.
So what level are these streets at, though?
It's a mix. So I'll move to the next slide. So what we've identified, and again, this is preliminary, just to get some numbers in front of you, we, again, we've driven some of the streets, so some of them, we have a really good idea, some of them, I feel like we need to have some additional conversations and additional evaluation to make sure that what we've identified is appropriate. But of those streets that you just saw, about 8,000 feet of them would be preventative maintenance, again, maybe just a simple overlay, maybe just crack seal. 14,400 feet of rehabilitation, reclamation, and about 12,000 feet of reconstruction. And you can see the cost, the estimated cost associated with those strategies. And then again, in the bottom table showing the length of water line that's been identified, wastewater line, and those associated cost. And so preliminarily, we've identified about $8,270,000 worth of work. And again, this is rough numbers, we're still evaluating, after talking with the Public Works Director, we've identified that some of the blocks, some of the streets have multiple blocks associated with them, there may not be full reconstruction of the utilities for that full, for that street, it may just be a block-by-block condition. So these numbers especially may be reduced.
So 28,000 linear feet, we're talking five miles? And if we got that five miles done, where does that leave us with the rest of the multiple, multiple miles in the city? I mean, I guess I'm still a little confused, are these the streets that were not part of the original street program?
Some of them were, they've been chip sealed, and at this point, that chip seal probably needs an overlay, and so again, we're still evaluating that. It may be that some of this footage gets moved up, same with reconstruction, some of it gets moved up. Typically, as part of a street rehabilit, or a street program, you want to implement all those different strategies. If you solely focus on roads that only need reconstruction, you can see, I mean, reconstruction cost is significantly higher per foot than the other ones. So you're getting less bang for your buck, per se. But if you just do preventative maintenance, then all of your streets that are in really, really poor condition will only continue to degrade further. So we've tried to balance it out as best as possible. Again, these are streets that have been ident, that were identified previously by city staff. We've worked with city staff, Chad and I have worked together, driven the streets, added some additional streets, taken some off that we thought were in good enough condition that they could last another year or two. And, but yeah, some of these have been already chip sealed, and again, it would just be more the preventative maintenance of a simple overlay, just to seal that, that street off. But some of them, like you'll see, well, I'll show you some pictures, I believe it's Eighth Street. Eighth Street's probably in need of a reconstruction. Any other questions on this? So potential challenges, again, you'll see on the next slide, but the typical street sections, so as part of our services for the city, we have developed typical street sections. So as a new subdivision comes in, every street gets built to a certain standard. The issue that we, a challenge that we have run into is that a lot of city streets don't meet that standard, and every block is a little bit different as you go down the street. So it's something that we'll have to work with the city to identify how we want to move forward. Franchise utilities can pose a challenge as far as being too close to the road and needing relocations. And then drainage is something that was not addressed in those costs. Again, we'll evaluate that as we evaluate the streets, but drainage is always a pretty big ticket item, depending on where you are.
So back to the street standard.
Mm-hmm.
Assuming that when you say evaluate, that part of the evaluation is, do we take an existing street and reconstruct it to the condition that we are requiring new developers?
Correct, yes, sir.
So as part of that discussion, I'm sure you consider, well, we shouldn't do that on some, but, but why would you not make our own streets or reconstruct our own streets to the same standard we're asking new developers to make those streets?
Well, I think the first, the simple answer is it depends on the strategy that we implement. Obviously, if we're reconstructing that street, I think it makes all the sense in the world to adhere to that standard. Again, I think what you'll see on the next slide, I believe it's the next slide, is Eighth Street, again, probably in need of reconstruction, but there's certain parts of Eighth Street that are 26 foot wide, and there's parts of Eighth Street that are 40 foot wide. So that makes a really big difference in your cost especially, and it's something that, again, we'll, we are evaluating and will continue to evaluate, but it's just a challenge that we need to, we need to, that we are facing, and we need to make a decision on whether or not we want to move forward with that.
Kevin, what are your thoughts on that? I mean, I know we hire professionals to look at this, but...
If you try to put all your streets into a new street category, you're not gonna be able to ever afford it.
Yeah, it just seems that if, there's a difference in, if you're doing preventative maintenance on the street or trying to keep a street together, I get that, but if you're starting from scratch...
Well, reconstruct, starting from scratch to a point, but if you have a 40-foot width, it's curb and gutter, you cut that down, you're gonna be giving... that's curb and gutter, you cut that down, you're gonna be giving people yard on both sides or one side that they may or may not want anymore. I've often had a difficult time figuring out why we have 26-foot wide blocks and 20-foot wide blocks going into 40-foot wide blocks, and it's all over the place. It's kind of like some of the old rightways are 100-foot wide and the street will never be more than 24-foot wide. But that's a part of being an old, old town area when it was laid out and then when it was built, and it's never, ever been handled in a comprehensive way. Even what we've done up till now has been less than completely holistic, less than comprehensive. A lot of it's just been reacting to what was there and trying to get it back to serviceable point. And you're gonna be that way from this point forward in a lot of your old town stuff. Some of it, we're gonna go in and patch it and overlay it, and we can do that ourselves. And it will not have the lifespan of some of the others, but it also won't have the kind of traffic. When you're talking about Eighth Street, Eighth Street carried a lot of traffic. Doing reconstruction on Eighth is gonna be a mess, and you'll get it as close as you possibly can to your standard. That's how you evaluate everything. In fact, whenever we do a, just an overlay on a piece of ground that we patch, that's trying to get closer to the standard, but you're not gonna get to the standard. If you go in and do a, not scar fire, what's the...
A mill, milling and overlay?
Yeah, milling and overlaying. We can probably have it milled and do the overlay ourselves on some. On some, if we're busy, it may make more sense to go ahead and contract that out. But if you do this program, start to finish in an accelerated, not even in a manner that's consistent with trying to get it done, and keep your pricing in place before asphalt or anything else goes up or concrete in particular. We're gonna be busy doing what we're doing, and it's gonna be pretty important to have contracting out on some of these larger projects so we can get them all done at once. And then when you get to Johnson Drive, that's gonna be a big one. Might not be a lot of reconstruction on it, although there's some base failures in places that have to be looked at. I sure hope we don't have to reconstruct it from start to finish, but we might. That's gonna be a project contractor that's gonna probably have to handle for the most part, if not all. So you're looking at a much more comprehensive approach to the project that you have. A lot of what you've done won't have to be redone, but whenever you have overlay on an important street that needs to, I mean, when you've done the, we always planned, for instance, to overlay Harrison after we seal coated it. That was always the plan. And really, the plan on Second is the same. And that's one of those that's got narrow and wide spots all the way through. But it, it's pretty smooth. It may not have to be done anytime soon. I don't know what it's on here or not. But it's in a lot better shape than Harrison. Harrison, we need to get it overlaid pretty soon. And again, when you do it, you smooth it out, people start driving faster. The very first thing that happens on streets that are terrible after you fix them is we get requests for stop signs, and that's held true in every street so far, particularly Harrison. I think, I think I may have installed two more stop signs on it. Maybe, no, I guess it's just one. But those are the kind of things that occur when you fix something that's been in place a long time that's been less than satisfactory. And so it's a good sign. But you need to do everything you can to get to a position where you're worried more every year about annual preventative maintenance. And seal coat is every seven to 10 years or so, isn't that right?
It's about right, yes, sir.
Get to a position, you can do seal coat every seven to 10 years to keep your streets, and then that's primarily what you do rather than going in and doing reconstructive work and so forth. But it's gonna, it's gonna take you a long time to get there, just to get it. And still, some of these shorter streets that don't carry much traffic, it's hard to justify going in there and doing a complete reconstruction. But they need to be smoothed up so people can get home without breaking their axes. But it's, it's, again, this is a, one more step towards a more comprehensive approach to your pavement. But the thing is, you'll never stop doing this. I'm not sure it was ever started, but if you ever start it and stop it, it'd be worse the next time. That's just something that needs to be continued every time you get the capacity to do it. You gotta keep going forward.
Speaking of, keep going forward.
So again, this is just a, an example of a typical section. So, excuse me, there's, we have a 32-foot wide section and a 40-foot wide section among others, but these are your standard street sections. And so here, the aforementioned Eighth Street, you can see this is from Jackson to Van Buren, no curb and gutter on either side, and it's 26-foot wide. And obviously, you can see the condition of the pavement here. I think we go down two blocks between Harrison and Tyler. And it actually starts out 26-foot wide with no curb and gutter on the right side, but you have curb and gutter on the left side. And then once you get about halfway down that block, then it widens to 40-foot with curb and gutter on both sides. So again, just challenges that we're, we're up against, and do you, do you go to the 40-foot wide the whole length? Do you narrow everything down to 32-foot wide and meet in the middle? How do you, how do you tackle that? So just something that we're having to work through and, and think through.
When you go back and do the street, you know, is the curb and gutter part put in there or do I just go back and put it out? Can you do a new street?
So again, that's, it's part of what we're having to consider. Again, curb and gutter is expensive. It's part of the cost. The biggest consideration in that is drainage. Obviously, a street is your primary conveyance of your stormwater runoff, of any rainfall runoff. And so if we have drainage issues in this area, dropping the road down, installing curb and gutter and allowing that runoff to run down the street is more beneficial, obviously, than trying to reestablish ditches here and here. Excuse me. So that's something that we would evaluate, especially when you already have existing curb and gutter, that road's already at that elevation, so you would probably want to go back with curb and gutter. But for instance, this block would be something to evaluate. Excuse me. Again, wanting to go back with a standard section for the full length would probably make the most sense. But cost is always a factor.
So you, so, so when, and you're doing that, you wouldn't, I'm saying, you don't factor the point of curb and gutter into, when you redoing the street? How did that, how do you...
Probably the, the cost, the cost that I showed per linear foot earlier?
Yes, sir.
Trying to remember. That was based off of some projects that we've done in, in another local municipality in the city of Robinson. And those did have curb and gutter. So that cost probably is based off of a section with curb and gutter. Yes, sir. But again, I mean, going 40-foot wide is, that's, that's a pretty good street section.
So if we narrow it back down to 26 or whatever, what do we do at the, we don't do that?
The minimum, the minimum I would narrow it down would be to 32 feet.
Okay. Then what do you do with the eight feet? You just turn it over to the property owner, adjacent to the property owner?
You put grass on it for it.
Build it up and put dirt in and...
It would, it would remain city right-of-way. It would just be additional yard for them.
So I guess there's kind of standard for a residential neighborhood of a town our size, right?
Yes, sir. And that's what, that's what these are. So this one here is a residential collector. So obviously, Eighth Street or Harrison, you know, roads that carry a little bit more traffic. Sixth Street is, I think, probably even wider than 40-foot wide, whereas this is just a typical residential street. So the majority of your streets, I would say, would, you would want to maintain this 32-foot wide. And this would be your typical standard. All the new subdivisions, for the most part, follow this standard. Again, unless it's a, unless it's a major road through, through that neighborhood. And so, I mean, the 32-foot wide, again, that's back of curb to back of curb. So I know it's a little small, but that provides you with basically two 12-foot lanes. This is 14-foot, so you have a 12-foot travel lane with a two-foot shoulder plus the additional two-foot for your curb. And the, the 40-foot wide would, if necessary, would allow you to put in the, a center-left turn lane if, if necessary. Allows for street parking on both sides. So more specifically, Johnson Drive reclamation. This is a project that we've identified, again, a reclamation project, not a reconstruction. In 2016, there was a chip seal that was added to portions that had, actually portions of it had been crack sealed back in 2013. So again, going back to our chart, you could consider this maybe where the, the crack seal was, and then the pavement section, the pavement condition declined, the city chip sealed it, and now we're back over here in this range where we need potentially rehabilitation or reconstruction. And the reasons for it are, as you know, there's lots of industrial park growth happening right now and just growth around the city, infill in the city. And Johnson Drive's a pretty important street for the city of McGregor. And so, and also in the future, there's the Judith Road Phase Two connection that will connect to Johnson Drive, so the industrial park can connect directly to 84. So what we're proposing is, again, a full-depth reclamation. Again, that will be a milling or a pulverization of the existing pavement structure, including the hot mix, surface course and the base, mixing in a cement or lime binder plus an asphalt emulsion. We've used this method on some other streets for the city of Waco, and I'll show you an example of that that worked pretty well. Hopefully, y'all have had a chance to drive it without knowing it. But the reason we've kind of selected a reclamation, there are base failures, but the majority of it is still in okay condition. There has been some crack propagation. Again, that's cracks moving up the, basically what was crack sealed is now starting to reflect through that pavement, through the chip seal. So you can see those cracks now in the road. And what we've estimated so far for this project is about 1.5 million.
Is that, is that the project the ARPA money's gonna be pointed out?
That is correct. So again, just some pictures that I took last week, I believe, or two weeks ago. Again, you can see here, this, what we typically call alligator cracking, or this would even potentially fall under rutting. There's a good bit of that out there. The pavement structure is starting to fail, and even with the rutting, you're starting to get a little bit of base failure there. It's the same here, especially through here and here. You can see the rutting. I think the next couple of pictures, a little bit of edge cracking here. You can see this is starting to break off, and then you do have one utility cut here. So again, we believe that a full-depth reclamation would be an appropriate rehabilitation strategy for this street. And I think the next picture will show you. So this was actually Spiegelville Road from Highway 84 to the Middle Boski Bridge. There by Twin Rivers and the Midway School. So what would happen is, what's shown here is this side of the road has already had the full-depth reclamation performed on it. This was, this is the end result after they've done the mixing and compacted it. So they would shut down one side of the road, move all the traffic to the opposite side, complete their work here. You see, they've laid the new asphalt while all the traffic is still on this side. And then once this is complete and in place, they would move all the traffic onto the new asphalt pavement and then do the same process on this side. So at all times, Johnson Drive could remain open. And I think this was, this was cement and an asphalt emulsion with a two-inch hot mix overlay. And it's performed fairly well over the last, I think this was done four years ago now. So this is kind of what the construction would look like. Again, we have some typical sections here. Johnson Drive actually varies in width from 30 to 40 feet. What we're proposing is a 42-foot wide section, similar to what you saw earlier, just without the curb and gutter. So in areas where we're a little short on pavement, we would be adding anywhere from six feet, zero to six feet on either side. And that would probably just be a full hot mix section since there's no existing base there. And again, reclaiming here in the middle and then overlaying the full width. And what that'll do is that'll provide you, again, with 40 feet, with 42 feet, you can have one lane each direction with a center-left turn lane and some additional area for a shoulder for any right-hand turning movements or if anybody, for whatever reason, needs to pull over.
I guess this kind of dovetails into that question that was asked the other night about what we, what would we be doing on Johnson Drive in front of the, that nursing facility we were talking about? Is that right?
Correct. Yes, sir. And so in that area, Johnson Drive is actually about 40 to 42-foot wide. So there's really no additional pavement width or, again, and no, no right-of-way acquisition required or anything like that. The majority of it is actually on the, the ends of, of Johnson Drive, about next to Blue Bonnet and up by Brookshures is where it narrows a little bit.
Is there enough room to do a right-hand turn queue, if you will, at Sixth on Johnson Drive going north? There's a lot, got a lot of turning at Sixth.
At Sixth.
Just thinking out loud, just something to look at.
Potentially.
Yeah, coming north on Johnson Drive.
Coming from Blue Bonnet?
Yeah, coming from Blue Bonnet, you get a lot of turn, turning right, because that's the primary lane in town.
Yeah.
Just guessing, and we might probably want to do a traffic count, but I'd guess there's probably twice as many turning actions at Sixth than any of the others, all of them. You're gonna get some at Fifth. The only streets that run all the way from Johnson Drive to Johnson Street are Third and Fifth. Only ones. I've always thought that was interesting.
Yeah.
And both of them have an offset.
I was gonna say, yeah.
And one of them's got, Fifth's got a really deep dip.
I didn't know if Fifth did. I knew Third took a little bit of a circuitous route.
Minor one at the junior high. About the same place that Third takes a lot.
Okay.
You can't drive the engine down that. You'll drag the tail.
Down Fifth?
Yep.
Depending on what the school does with that old admin building, we might be able to straighten that one up a little bit at some point in the future. And I don't, well, and that old dressing room, well, no, we can't take the wall. I'm sorry. I'm not even gonna go down there really. Not gonna straighten that one out. At least not off of that corner.
So as Kevin mentioned, what we've identified as far as funding sources are the ARPA funds. I believe some of that's been used for other, other things, but we've identified that mainly for Johnson Drive, really due to the, the requirements of, of spending that ARPA and reporting that back. And then obviously, the council voted to pass a bond earlier this year that could be used, and then the regular street budget for, again, any, most of the preventative maintenance items that city staff could handle. Some next steps. Again, we've already kind of completed the evaluation of the various blocks. As we've discussed, there's still some outstanding items that we need to, need to still evaluate, but for the most part, a lot of the groundwork's been laid. Again, city staff has already done a good job of evaluating the water and sewer systems and provided that to Walker Partners. Again, some of the blocks, we may have to, we'll, we'll look at those and make sure we've identified the full length of those water and wastewater systems within those street sections. Next, we'll just be verifying that we've selected the appropriate strategies for those streets, prioritize them over a three-to-four-year period, and then at council's discretion, move forward with both the reclamation of Johnson Drive and kind of a 2023 Streets project with the associated water and wastewater improvements. Believe that is it, so any other questions?
Once you, once you start, say like on Johnson, what is the timeframe of course?
I would estimate probably four to six months, just depending on, again, how much road widening we have to do, because that'll be, that'll be some additional work outside of the reclamation. Again, the reclamation's pretty straightforward. A lot of it is curing time, waiting for that cement and asphalt emulsion to fully cure, to make sure that that section is set up, doing the testing on it, make sure it's got the appropriate strength that it's been designed to. Once it's, once it's overlaid, then it's, again, it's a day or two of waiting for that hot mix to fully set up, and you can put traffic on it. So the reclamation process really isn't too extensive, but especially in the areas where we'll be widening, we'll probably, we'll have to do some grading work, you know, to reestablish the ditches and stuff like that, since we're widening the road. So that'll add a little bit of time to it, but for the most part, it shouldn't be too extensive. And again, that, the road should be open to traffic at all times. It may be reduced down to one lane in certain areas, but, but it should be open to traffic at all times during construction.
Back to funding a second, how much are we expecting out of that ARPA money?
Nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand? Nine hundred.
Nine hundred.
And so we had set aside, what was the other one, seemed like number two up there was bonding money, that was something that was left?
That's what you just did, seven million dollars.
So that's seven. Okay. And then the regular street budget, what are we setting aside?
Two hundred thousand.
Okay. Okay. So the project essentially took into account all the money available?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And it's over three, four, maybe five-year period total?
Right.
That was my question.
Yeah, it probably, it would, I mean, Johnson Drive will obviously be, that'll add some length to the, to the overall project of the first year, but typically only two to three miles a year. If, even if that.
And if going out for contracts, would council have to approve every contract for each road, or?
Typically, yeah, it would be, it wouldn't just be one single road. I mean, typically, we do, especially with a reconstruction, we would group them together. That way, one, you would get a better cost, you know, economy of scale to your, to your unit cost, and two, so you don't have to approve every single time we want to reconstruct a street.
I just, as soon as we start opening them up again, I know what's gonna happen, it's just gonna be fun.
We gotta do it, I know what you're talking about.
Yep, you do, you've got a lot of it.
Yeah.
I told you the first time we started, that was what was gonna happen, it happened a lot worse than I even thought it would.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for Jacob? You know, as usual, just everybody keep us highly informed of what's going on from both a standpoint of work and spending the money, and even behind the scenes as the planning goes on, so we're informed and even can add our two cents.
Absolutely, I think our plan is to, again, like I said, prioritize those streets, once we kind of finalize what strategy we want to use, prioritize them, and then bring those back to council to, to keep you up to date on which streets we're gonna move forward with first, or plan to move forward with first.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Kevin, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, thanks a lot, Jacob, appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Jacob.
Sir.
No action take under sevens, we move to eights, discussion possible acts regarding approval of resolution R dash zero eight, twenty twenty-three of resolutions supporting the City of McGregor's application to the Texas Department of Transportation's twenty twenty-three transportation alternatives set aside call for projects. Brian, what you got?
Good evening. We are submitting an application, a detailed application for what we're calling the Cottonwood Trail McGregor Branch. So we have the old rail bed out here, the green is the property that we already own, the red is a property that we need to work on, getting an easement on, and then the purple down here would be sidewalks going into, all the way to the exchange. This would be four-foot wide, four-inch thick concrete that would run through the neighborhood there, and then the trail would have parking, the trailheads on, on either end, ten-foot wide, six-inch thick concrete, so theory is that maybe an emergency vehicle could get down it if it needed to. We've crunched the numbers, we've submitted a preliminary to Texas DOT, and they've asked us to present a detailed application, so it's a little bit more information there. One of the things that we got back was, we needed to show how the new subdivisions that were being planned out would somehow integrate into this. Most of the developers have agreed to do something in some form or fashion, either right from the get-go or in the next stages of their development. We also received support from the MPO office and out of Waco for this, so they're, they're backing us up, kind of advocating for us for Texas DOT. And then they asked us to put some, some lighting, so we crunched the numbers. Woodway just finished the arboretum, they have some motion-activated solar lights that were pretty affordable, so we included those in the budget. So should have had this in there, but right now, our estimated total for the entire project, 1.8 million dollars. It is a eighty-twenty match grant, so the city has to come up with 20% of the funding. But in our application that we've submitted, we've informed Texas DOT that we would pay that out over the course of several years, so we can do a little bit at a time. So we stretched it out to three-year project to complete it from end to end. In order to submit the detailed application to Texas DOT, though, we need support of council, that if we are approved later this year, I think the window between October and December is when they would let us know if we receive funding, that y'all would stand behind the project.
Yeah, this is, it begins on the eastern end of what we own, correct?
Yes, sir, yes, the city owns, get back over here. I think you're right, Jacob, battery's dying. So the city owns, basically from Cotton Belt Parkway, we own about three hundred feet on the other side there, but Cotton Belt Parkway is right here, and this is where Cotton Belt Crossing Residential Development is gonna be going in, this is parks Phase One and Two, this is the ranch, and so we start down here, and it runs the full length of the, of that rail bed, and then the railroad maintains functionality of this part here, so we come off of that, the city owns a piece of property right here, and we could, we could come in and, and then go down into the neighborhood.
We own where that green stop.
That's correct.
Where that red comes in.
Yeah, sorry.
We have a utility right of way where that red is, I believe.
Yes, that's where the, the water main, or the water line on the rail bed runs right there, so there is a utility easement there, but we don't have access for a path, so we have to work on getting that.
How far is that, if we were to cover all that from the exchange all the way out to Cotton Belt?
That's about four miles.
This has always been the concept for that right-of-way, after we get the utilities in it, the grant makes it something we can achieve, actually, sooner than later, and makes it nicer, makes it concrete rather than what we were looking at, which was the decomposed granite. And eventually, and this is something that Jen and I have talked about ever since we looked at that, eventually tie it in with the existing Cottonwood Trails over in Waco. It's pretty easy to get there until you get to the stuff where the rail was behind and through Parrish Creek and some of that, and then some of that's been sold. So Waco, essentially, and maybe possibly Woodway, that's a place or two, have to work on it. We've talked about this with Woodway, with Waco, with Hued, and there's an opportunity for an integrated trail system, go all the way from the exchange to you name it. I, I put a couple of paths down that go through Hued and through Waco and end up over at the crossroads shopping area, and it's not, it actually joins up with a couple of trails that are already there. Pretty interesting when you get to look at it, and that's not our issue, this is our issue, but it's part of a bigger picture that goes pretty deep into the Clinton County and particularly Waco. One trail can possibly end up at Lake Waco. So there's some, there's a possibility you ride your bike to HEB, hopefully we'll have something between here and there by then, but it's just the kind of thing, once you get to looking at it, that's possible, and this will be our piece of that structure.
And there's a couple pictures here, just want to indicate what they are, because I passed them up. This would be ideally if South Windsor thing got built out, coming out of that neighborhood, you could have a pedestrian landing, so they wouldn't have to frogger all four lanes over there, and then an emergency call box, since it is a pretty lengthy stretch of, of trail. And we would put bullards on these, so cars wouldn't accidentally turn down them. It's all included in our.
Accidentally?
Accidentally. It's all included in the detailed application to Texas DOT.
All done to Texas DOT specs.
Yeah.
And our portion's only 20%. It's interesting. So any idea what our chances are?
I basically got encouraged very strongly by the MPO to do this, and then Jacob and I sat in on the conference call when they reviewed our preliminary, and it seemed very positive, the feedback that we were getting, it was, it was almost kind of like, I don't speak out of turn, but like they told us, hey, do your thing, and we like your project. So they didn't come out and say that, but body language and, and the way they were talking was pretty positive.
And there's always next year, and then year, and next, so if you don't get it, you just stay on that project, and basically get there.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody have any questions of Brian?
I have a question, does the EDC want to participate?
He's hard of hearing these days. But we can go to his board and ask him.
We get the grant, I bet you we can come up with the money.
Yep.
Sure, if you win.
So at this point, we're just approving the grant application, is there a?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, is there a motion on, under item eight, about resolution number?
I'm moving, I'm approving the resolution R dash eight, dash twenty twenty-three.
There's a motion second under item eight, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. Item nine, discussion possible action regarding approval of resolution R dash nine dash twenty twenty-three of resolution for the City of McGregor to enter into a multi-use agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for maintenance of downtown portions of right-of-way along State Highway three seventeen and South Main Street.
This is a good one. So Bounce Construction is doing their work over there, they would like to put some balconies on part of their building, but in doing so, Texas DOT really kind of challenged that. So we discovered that Texas DOT's right-of-way is essentially door-to-door in downtown McGregor, it's not the sidewalk, it's not to the curb of the sidewalk. So in order for Texas DOT to allow that construction to take place where they have the balcony overhanging the sidewalk and legitimately going into Texas DOT's right-of-way, the city has to agree to maintain this two-foot, six-inch section here of curb all along that route. This has been a rodeo. But yeah, that's an agreement that will maintain that, which the city already has been maintaining those sidewalks.
So two feet?
Yep.
Is that similar to what, what they did on that, where they do the exercise thing when they first texted out?
Right, that was, that one was approved some time back, and so that was, that was kind of the point of contention with the, with Bounce, is like, well, you let them do it over there, and they weren't gonna let them do it. So the agreement was, because they've already set a precedent, that if we would take over maintaining something that we've already been maintaining, as far as anybody knows, but just have it documented on paper, yeah.
Okay.
Kevin said he'd never heard of this either.
Well, if it'll help our developer downtown to do what they want to do, then let's do it.
It will redefine McGregor's grant.
Yeah, I agree.
He's already in process, and it's just gonna keep going forward.
The renderings are quite impressive, but I said that I wouldn't reveal them until he was ready, that it's gonna, it's gonna change what your downtown looks like.
That's great.
He did the nation reselection last week.
Okay, is there a motion by resolution number? The motion is second under item nine, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Ten, discussion possible action regarding the selection of one person from the nominees to fill the unexpired term of seat one on the nine-one-one Board of Managers. So is this one of these things we vote for? Yeah, well, that says seat one, select one. So we get to vote for one person, I think that's a no-brainer for us, so anybody want to make a motion to cast our one ballot?
Henry?
That's what it says.
Never, ever heard of that.
I don't hear a, I don't hear a second, though.
Second, second.
There's a motion a second to cast our ballot, or one ballot for one Henry Van Smith. Any questions? That's it. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries.
Does this mean we can call him Henry now?
I hope so.
I think he's shaking his head.
Okay, item eleven, Kevin, we go into executive session?
Yes, sir.
Okay, under item D, economic development?
Yes, sir.
Or anything else?
No, sir, this is a short one.
Okay, so that'll take us to a closed meeting, pursuant to chapter five fifty-one Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in section five fifty-one point zero eight seven, economic development regarding discussions for economic development, negotiations included commercial financial information received from a business prospect seeking to locate, stay, or expand, entered the City of McGregor to discuss economic development negotiations in order to deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect. So at this time, at seven forty-eight, we are out of regular session and into executive session, we will come back and take any action as necessary. We will come back and take any action as necessary.
Get back on. Okay, uh, Ron, we back home? All right, great, thanks. It's, uh, eight-thirty. We're back in open session with no action to take at a executive session. So that takes us to item twelve, which is announcements from the city manager.
I have nothing to add, sir.
Thirteen requests, comments from the mayor indoor council. Anybody, anything? Kevin, when will our next meeting be? We gonna get back on regular schedule?
Yes, sir, June, second Monday in June, whatever date that is. And oh, by the way, lest you forget, budget season is upon us. We'll be giving you a calendar on that. As usual, it won't be any fun and it'll be too long, but we'll have to do it.
All right, that takes us to, uh, last item on the agenda. This meeting's adjourned eight-twenty-seven.